Good evening, everyone. We will, I'm gonna call to order this meeting of the Franklin School Board, February seventeenth, at six oh three P M. If everybody could rise for the salute to the flag. You, Colleen, where the meeting's posted as required. Thank you. Alright, we'll move right on to item number two, our public participation. This is our public comment, and in more than thirty minutes, we'll go to this portion of the meeting. I do ask that each speaker keep their comments to three minutes, and please state both your name and the ward you live in if you would like to speak. If we do run out of time, there's a second public participation agenda item at the end of the meeting. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board?
You Delaney Carrier, City Council Ward One. I now have four items to raise. Number one, I did not get a civics plus notice for the meeting, whereas you guys were still gonna use the civics plus notification system.
Yes, I just didn't get that.
Thank you. Number two, I sent an email to Superintendent to forward to all of you for a funding, resolution, or funding, fair funding letter that I also brought to the City Council for the February meeting. Hoping you all got that. I know some of you signed on already, if anybody didn't get it, let me know, I can forward it again. This is a similar, similar item to the fair funding resolution that I brought to the school board for the last three years. So I definitely appreciate if all of you would sign on to this letter. This already has traction statewide, and the goal is to get as many school board members, city councilors, elected officials signing on to this to put pressure on our state representatives to pass some better funding measures for the state to bring more money to Franklin. Number three, I had a call from a concerned high school parent this afternoon, inquiring about the winter carnival's snow sculptures this year, saying that that wasn't happening, and they were a little upset about that. So if there's any feedback on that, I know some people would be interested in that. And number four, I believe we are shy one school board member for Ward One, and we're looking for a Ward One citizen to step up and volunteer to fill the vacant seat for a school board from now through October elections. So anybody out in the public that's interested, all you've gotta do is go to City Hall, go to the City Manager's or the City Clerk's desk, and fill out a volunteer application, and it will be considered by the City Council at our next meeting. Thank you.
Alright, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and move on to item three, recognitions, any recognitions tonight? Jack?
I want to recognize the Franklin Middle School Drama Group for their production of-
FMS players.
FMS players, thank you, Shrek Junior. Unfortunately, they weren't able to have a Sunday matinee, but they did a fantastic job with the performances that they were able to have, so it was awesome to see the students up there giving it their all. So a nice job to everybody that was involved in that production.
I would like to recognize and introduce you all to Kaylee Valier, who's here as our new student school board rep. This will be Zoe's last meeting with us, so Zoe, thank you for being here, you've been great. Kaylee, welcome.
That's our acting skills.
You're still welcome to come, Zoe. You can speak in public input.
Any other recognitions? Thank you for those, and awesome segue, I can hand it over to item number four to our student, for our student representative for Ward Two.
Lots of events and fundraisers occurred this month throughout the district. Most recently, as Mr. Finley just mentioned, the middle school put on their performance of Shrek Junior, the musical. The cast was made up of only fourth to eighth grade students, and its production team consisted of mostly high schoolers, including myself. I assisted music director of the show, which is awesome. This show, just as every other theater project that has ever been put in our district, is an estimate to the educational, creative, and collaborative benefits theater has to offer our students. And I'm sure you'll be hearing many more updates after I'm gone about theater in the future. In other news, the Franklin High School robotics team is currently in preparation for a robotics competition in two weeks. When there, they'll be able to show off their robotics creation and demonstrate the STEM skills of our school. The club is still looking for new members, so if you have any contact to any students who even might be slightly interested, let me know, or let Kaylee know, and we'll get in touch with the group's captain, Jericho Downs. Next, the National Honor Society was very active this month, which is amazing, because we haven't been very active, but it's okay. First, the group planned to put together a Valentine's Day Flower Gram fundraiser that was extremely successful and popular in the school, and now the group is in process of planning the March induction ceremony, where sophomore and junior students who have excelled academically, socially, and morally in our school will have the opportunity to be rewarded for their efforts. And finally, last Friday marks the beginning of the high school's annual winter carnival event, and this week, the students from each class will compete in a series of events, all to find out which grade will wear the winter carnival crown until next year. As of right now, the juniors hold first place. But as a senior, I know that my class will take a lead soon. And that's all for tonight, thank you for your time, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to begin with.
So do we have a date for the March induction, Honor Society?
March twenty first, I believe.
Is it at six?
Yes, I think we're planning for six.
Okay, alright, thank you for your service, Zoe.
Of course. Oh, and as far as snow sculptures go, we aren't able to do snow sculptures this year because apparently, this is what I was told, the city doesn't have the funds to put somebody down here to put together snow piles. But we are doing something to make up for that. So no need to be disappointed or concerned.
Can I bring out a bunch of shovels?
So, so we had, we had reached out to them, and the city said, no way, because of the snow that was coming in and all the stuff they were planning for, so we pivoted, and we turned it into this, like, I don't say beach scene, but using beach stuff and-
It's an igloo building.
Igloo building, and they're gonna make their own little communities, and today, we had zero participants, can you tell why? Because it was freezing cold out with the wind chill out there?
Yeah.
So, we had stuff and supplies, so it's up to the students now, but it's not a, it didn't happen because they were on to do it, and then by the time everything fell, well, we pivoted, like they always do here, and they have a plan. And Zoe's team just says, they really have done an amazing job organizing winter carnival this year. In my three years here, this has been clearly the most organized, and they're on top of it. Even with the delayed opening today, we got everything in, and they pivoted on some things, and-
We're having full school assemblies every Monday, well, each Monday, Wednesday, and Friday this week. Lots of participation. It's gonna be good.
Miss the snow sculptures, though.
Me too.
Any other questions? Thanks to Zoe, thanks Zoe for your service of the past year. Okay, you go, go ahead and move on to item five, the approval of prior board minutes. We're looking at January twenty first, twenty twenty five. Do we have a motion for those minutes? Moved by Jack, do we have a second? Second by Ruth, thank you. Any questions, discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving the January twenty first board minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Oh, that's right, roll call.
Roll call.
Thank you. Roll call, vote please. Public session minutes.
Lori Cass? Jane Cody?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Marie Danforth?
It's Jane.
Leanne Feitfield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
Michael Lombardo?
Yes.
Ruth Cantina?
Probably good on those? Like, still can't get over the fact that we don't have any B across M. Okay, and then we have the non-public minutes from non-public session for January twenty first as well, those are currently sealed, but we need to accept them. Moved by Jane. Second by Leanne. Roll call vote, please. Oh, yes, question.
Do they have to be on the agenda in order to approve, or in order to discuss them?
Yes.
But it only was one.
I mean, it only was one day.
What's the concern, Jack, of the non-public ones, you mean, or the-
Yeah, because they're, because they weren't publicized on the agenda.
It's insane, like, public, non-public, for, like, that wasn't parsed out.
Public wasn't notified. I don't know, I'm not sure of logistics of it, I, I haven't done it in the past.
So I think we-
If they weren't on there, I haven't.
Yeah, I would say, let's do it, and then in the future, Colleen will be specific, and if someone makes an issue of it, then we can revisit it.
Excellent, any other questions, discussion? Okay, now we'll move forward with the roll call vote for the non-public minutes for January twenty first.
Lori Cass?
Yes.
Jane Cody?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Marie Danforth?
It's Jane.
Leanne Feitfield? Jack Finley?
Yes.
Michael Lombardo?
Yes.
Ruth Cantina?
Yes.
Seal, twice?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to suspend the minutes of the five forty-five non-public session on February seventeenth, twenty twenty five, at practice meeting.
Alright, motion made by Jack, seconded by Michael, do we have any discussions, questions? Alright, roll call vote, please.
Lori Cass?
Yes.
Jane Cody?
Yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Marie Danforth?
It's Jane.
Leanne Feitfield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
Michael Lombardo?
Yes.
And Ruth Cantina?
Yes.
Hey, you never know. Alright, thank you, everyone. Alright, we can move on to item number six, financial report with Jefferson.
So good evening, everyone. I hope you had an opportunity to review the financial statements in the board folder. Good news, we are currently considered over budget at this point by two hundred and seven thousand two oh four, which is a reduction of a hundred and one thousand two hundred dollars from the previous month. So we're less in debt, so to speak, than we were last month. This is progress in the right direction, and hopefully it'll continue. Part of that was thirty-one thousand sixty-five dollars was for a social worker that we were able to move half of that person's cost into a grant that our wellness coordinator was awarded. We also had a guidance council resign, which we will not be replacing. This saved about forty-four thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Currently, our total special education budget is seven hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred nine dollars more than was budgeted. This is a decrease of last, from last month, of twenty-two thousand eight eighty-six, so a bit of movement in the right direction with special education. I think there's a couple of other situations that are coming up that still haven't been recognized within the budget that will also continue to push it in the right direction. And obviously, this is the greatest influence on our overage, in our overall budget. The balance of the savings that we've recognized this month is spread throughout the rest of the budget. We continue to receive some revenue at higher than projected. Our indirect costs related to grant administration is currently twenty-six thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars higher than budgeted. Interest on the bank account is currently fifty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars higher than was budgeted. And Medicaid reimbursement continues to creep up, which stands at twenty-two thousand five fifty-three. Right now, overall, our general fund revenues are a hundred and eighty-six dollars higher than was budgeted for the year. So, and that will continue to occur as we have the remaining months of the fiscal year through the end of June. And that's all I have for this evening. Does anybody have any questions?
Didn't we simply pull out of special education from the general year-to-date pension?
Well, I have the budget set up based under what each administrator's responsibilities are, so I could tell you what Paul Smith looks like, I can tell you what the middle school looks like, I can tell you what the high school looks like, special education is its own piece also. So, we always look at special education because of the factors that are so involved with what we have to spend in that budget, because so much of it is controlled by federal law. So, when we have challenges, like someone moving into the district that has much higher costs, we can recognize it, we can see where the issues are. The reason why our overall budget isn't over budget much higher is because other areas of the budget have savings at this point. So, but we like to pull out special education, because a lot of times, that's information that actually is required for information services, like the financial reports that I submit to the state every year, actually has a whole section specific to what you spent on special education. So, we do that as part of the budget process, as we're going through our budget process, we work with each administrator individually, going through their budgets, so I'm able to also draw expense reports for each section of the budget, too. Obviously, special education can be the most challenging, so that's why we always like to see what is affecting that, what's influencing that. Yep.
So, May, May comes, we're in the same situation here.
What is our plan of action? What I'll start doing in the next month or so is projecting our fund balance or our deficit, depending on what that is, because obviously, as I said, revenues are going up, so that can offset our deficit on the budgetary side a bit. I also look at experience that I've had in the last seven years, my seventh year here, so during cleanup, I usually recover a few hundred thousand dollars by closing out purchase orders we ended up not using, we also currently are not. We have frozen the budget, doesn't mean I have unencumbered monies that have been obligated towards the purchase order, I've left them that way. That way, I just have a sense of where things are, that we might want to spend or might need to spend, so I don't want to shut those down right now. And as we progress along, because we, special education typically tends to be the most fluctuating report, and some of the information I haven't gotten from our special ed department is, there are certain scenarios coming up that also might reduce our deficit even more, so I'd just like to keep that visually, for me at least, because I'm the numbers guy, so I can see what's going on, and see where things are changing from month to month and so forth. But as we get closer to the end of the year, we'll be able to dive into it a little bit more and see where we could actually pick up potentially some more savings. The biggest challenge would be if some unanticipated situation, like most of the unanticipated situations that we've had experience this year already with special education, something else like that plays out during the rest of the year, and then, then that's when we start having, and that's one of the things why I went to the City Council last, this past beginning of the month, actually, and made them well aware of where we were also. So, but I wasn't there to, you know, have them solve the problem yet, just letting them know what's going on, be completely transparent, so it wasn't something that came right out of the blue. I am, say fifty-five percent confident we should be okay by the end of the year. As the year progresses, that confidence will keep raising, but I will keep continuing to let the board know where we are and how things are going, and obviously, if any unanticipated scenarios play out, then we'll have to have further discussions on what we want to do at that point, because that could potentially affect our subsequent year budget, too.
Any other questions for Jefferson? Thank you. Okay, move on to item number seven, committee reports. Any volunteers? Alright, thanks, Leanne.
Safety committee met on one thirty. We had discussion on YRBS, which is Youth Risk Behavior Study, or Survey. We talked about federal grants for that, Thrive, talked about Police Department looking for an SRO officer, which is funded through the city. They hadn't had anybody apply yet. MTSSB, which is Multi-Tier System of Support Behavior, we had updates from all schools. We talked about the Swiss Data Safe Grant, the exterior brick damage at the middle school, the chemical hygiene plan, emergency operations plan, we talked about school ID visitor protocols, safety, we talked about ID badges and what to do if you lose them. Also talked about the Alice possibly coming in for training, which is the active shooter, and handle with care protocol. And then, there was a little bit of discussion about, I love you guys, and I don't have much information on that one, so. We have our next meeting on April seventeenth at four o'clock.
Thank you very much.
April seventeenth at four.
Finance?
So we did have a meeting of the Finance Committee last week, I believe the date was the fifth? Yes. And we discussed a lot of things, a lot of the items that Jefferson had just updated the board on. Other than that, Jane has the- Yeah, yeah, but I think, honestly, I think for the most part, Jefferson's update kind of encompasses the majority of the topics.
William, do you all have a meeting, another meeting date set?
We do, March, yes.
March fifth.
March fifth.
Thank you. Who else do we have? Negotiations, Jane, go for it.
Okay, we met on February twelfth. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I was gonna preface the new policy we're gonna review tonight, but that will be later in the agenda.
There we go. Well, speaking of policy, I'll jump in and give our policy committee update. Policy committee met on February eleventh at four thirty. We approved prior minutes, so we're all caught up there, and then our main review was of policy BDE, which is relevant to the committees and delegates for the board itself, and so we adjusted that to reflect more accurately our current committees, and that is the policy that we'll be going for first read tonight, so some context for that. We talked about some legislative updates, which we'll be talking more about later, and our next meeting date will be on March fourth at four thirty, and after policy, we had I two.
So we had I two for eleventh as well, at six P M. We also went through and approved our minutes. There's a couple items that are, I know are on the agenda for tonight, so Franklin High School Summer School and the class rank, so I, I know that we'll be going over those, I don't want to take time up for that. We did get information from Jules in regards to curriculum update, we got a nice handout of basically when those teams meet to discuss, and it also came up that literacy will be reviewed this year, so that will be forthcoming at some point. We do have special education on our agenda as a standing item. The only thing that came out of this, this past week was asking about the driver position, and if that was going to move forward. I know we were waiting for some information.
Jefferson, I had a great meeting with the Department of Safety, and confirmed all of what we knew about drivers and certifying the van and whatnot, so we are ready to post for the driver position. So that process is moving forward, so we're excited about that. And we'll be able to use, believe it or not, the oldest van is the van we'll be able to use for the home-to-school piece, once we hire a certified driver or train someone to be a certified driver. So we're pretty excited about that conversation. Jefferson, I don't know if you have anything to add there, but-
I know, it's just, obviously, the challenge is what you tend to use your vehicles for, and it's been a kind of a recent change in the law. Usually, typically was anything under sixteen passengers. It could be used for certain things, but now it changed to ten. So like, we have two back vans that are twelve-passenger vans, and we're using them as we're allowed to use them as far as going from school to school, or school to school activities, that type of stuff. Restrictions come more into play if you're looking at home to a school transportation, that's where you have to have the driver pass that train and a certification, and the vehicle has to have a school bus inspection taken care of, so that was enlightening information, but definitely clarified what we could do. So, anything like that, the older van that we have, or smaller, like, because we use taxi services and other transportation companies that use minivans and stuff like that, those can be used for home-to-school transportation, but obviously, the situation we're always looking at is our out-of-district transportation, where we have to take a child from home to, say, Spalding Youth Center, or Mount Prospect, or whatever else, so certain vehicles are only allowed to be used like that, that are not considered a full-size school bus, plus above sixteen passenger and weight specification, because they have four different classes of vehicles that fall into that, so.
Do the newer vans have removable seating at all? And if they do, could we use them? I'm only asking because I know the older van has, it's old, and it might have maintenance issues if we're using it for-
Well, it doesn't have a lot of miles on it, though, and it's a diesel, it only has about forty-five thousand miles on it, so it's not-
Lot of job and paint job, it looks brand new.
Yeah, we had a lot of work done to it structurally, we've got it inspected thoroughly, so mechanically, it's actually in pretty good shape. We improved the body of it, so it's not that gray, faded look anymore, and any issues with the body have been taken care of, so-
We can definitely ask that question.
But that's a good, that is a good question, I didn't think to ask that, I'll reach out to the DMV and ask the person that I've been working with down there if we actually took out some seats from the other two vans, if that would qualify.
Do they have anything for wheelchair assistance?
We do not.
No.
So the name of the next meeting is Mark Ford, that's to give-
I know we have a school board goals update later, so we can hold off on that in terms of committee work. Are there any other committee reports tonight? Aha, okay. So there is the update, okay, so we'll, we'll postpone that. Thank you for that, but do you know, do you have a date for when?
We're gonna actually talk during the meeting tonight, once we get to that agenda item, we're gonna schedule it.
Repurposing an agenda item?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for the committee reports, and so we will move on now to item eight, new business with Superintendent McGee.
Okay, so the Finance Committee has scheduled their finance meeting to review the budget with the administration on March fifth, so that's when we will meet with the Finance Committee. So the thought was that we would try to meet with the full board the following week, which would then give Jefferson time to make any adjustments he needs to make based on the feedback from the Finance Committee on March fifth. I'm looking the week of the tenth, sorry, the week of the, here it is the tenth, the week of the tenth to the fourteenth, that week, to see if there's a night that week that we could do our school board budget review. So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there's no committee meetings scheduled, they didn't allow anyone to schedule anything, so we could try and hopefully get a date that everybody could do. So I'll take recommendations here. Jack, I'm looking at you, because yours is the hardest.
You can't do Monday or Wednesday?
Yours is the hardest one.
Tuesday? Tuesday the eleventh? Tuesday the eleventh.
What time do you want to start, Tuesday the eleventh, everybody?
Nope. The week before.
You want to start at five thirty, or you want to start at six, guys?
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty on the eleven. I can cancel the doctor's appointment, I love it. Get out of it.
I feel like we're enabling him.
You're enabling?
Yeah.
Doctor's appointment really less fun than we have budget.
No, no, we're ready for the budget, we'll be ready. All right, so that will be five thirty on that Tuesday, that's perfect. And we'll make sure, um, to get that all out posted and everything else. All right, second up, uh, I would like you to approve the resignation of Wendy Hamel, high school guidance counselor.
Motion made by Jane. Second by Ruth, any discussion? Right, roll call vote, please.
Lori Cass? Liz Kobe?
Yes.
Jane Kobe? Yes. Marie Danforth? Is Marie still on the phone?
Marie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, I'm sorry, couldn't hear my name, yes. My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Leanne Feifield?
Yep.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
Michael Lombardo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, next up is the approval of the, uh, fiscal year twenty-four financial statements. Jefferson spoke about this in his report. And I, is there a sign off, Jefferson, as well?
Yeah, there is, just, um, after every approves it, then myself and you and, um, Liz will sign it.
So we need the board to approve the financial statements so that Liz and I and Jefferson can sign off on the fiscal statement.
I move that we approve the financial state- statements as presented.
Motion made by Michael, a second?
Second.
Second by Leanne, any discussion questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Don't let any don't leave yet. One, one minute.
Lori Cass?
Yep.
Jane Kobe? Yes. Liz Kobe?
Yes.
Marie Danforth?
Yes.
Leanne Feifield?
Yes.
Jack Finley?
Yes.
Michael Lombardo?
Yes.
Liz Gina, yes.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the funding resolution update. So I did send the funding resolution signed by all of you out to our legislators, uh, as well as to the superintendent's association executive director. I did hear back from two legislators, uh, so I wanted to read to you what they had said about it. One of them was Representative Brian Morse. So what he wrote to me was attached is the state aid from the Department of Education for all schools, in which I've singled out Franklin. Shows around twelve thousand of funds for student from the state. I also saw in the budget for this year roughly two hundred and eighty thousand for the office of the superintendent, over eight hundred thousand for the office of the principal. I'm looking to see itemized lists to show where those numbers come from and employees under as well. Thank you for your time, absolutely, we should set up a meet, being on the education committee for the state policy, what could I do to help Franklin's situation better education? So we did, we did send that to him. Uh, I have not heard back from them, Kim, since I've sent that. And then we did hear back from Senator Ennis. Senator Ennis. Uh, let me find it, hold on one second. Dear Mr. Legal, thank you for your message, there's no easy answer and I'm the vice chair of our Senate Education Funding Task Force. We meet on Wednesday. There will, there will be action as taxpayers are getting crushed, student outcomes are stagnant at best, and no one is happy. On that note, have a good weekend. So those were the two responses I received. From sending that out, but we'll keep putting it out there. You can go now, Glenn. I just need you to hear that. Okay, next on the agenda is the focus walk update. We did have our second focus walk. Uh, I was able to attend part of it before I got called out for something. Uh, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jewel real quick, she can talk about February eleventh and hopefully drum up some business for March twelfth, which is our next focus walk date.
Yeah, so on February eleventh, we had our second focus walk. Um, unfortunately, Leanne was very ill, so she was not able to join us, but Jane did come and, um, uh, who else was able to join us? I apologize. Yes, I was trying to think if there was any other board members that made that walk, but I, I knew you were coming and then didn't, weren't able to. Uh, but we did have a couple teachers, um, and we had Dan attend one, Ginny Everett was able to attend one. Uh, Dave was able to attend the last one, so two of our administrators have attended. I will say for me, um, other than the, the great conversations that we have after each focus walk, I think it's great for the teachers that have been able to get into other buildings and also get around to even their own buildings. They can use it as professional development time, um, so they can ask for that time off and get PD hours for doing that work. But it's been incredibly enlightening to them to see the work that's happening in the other buildings that they've never been aware of. And I know as a teacher here for twenty-two years until I took this job, I was very unaware of what was happening at Paul Smith in the middle school. I could've told you anything happening here. But, uh, and that's why for me it's very important that they have those opportunities. You can learn a lot from going into the other buildings, um, and the teachers that have had the time to just walk around and see what their colleagues are doing has also been great. So I'm really hoping that more teachers take advantage of the last two that we have. We have one on March eleventh and then there's one more in April. Um, I did send that Google form out already, so anybody that hasn't had a chance to do that yet, um, hopefully you can do one of the last two that we have, even if you can't do all of them, you can pick one or two. I mean, most people have only been able to do one or two, not necessarily all four all day long. This time, our focus was looking on, um, collaboration and differentiation in the classroom. And as I did the first time, I sent all that feedback out for the staff so that they could see. Um, Carissa kinda helps me, we categorized it. This time, we focused on sharing the stuff people had seen about differentiated instruction and student-centered learning, clear expectations and strong classroom management, social emotional learning and life skills being taught, and then engagement and motivation. Those kind of were the four themes that were seen by the people that went when we sat down to give feedback afterwards. So again, we're gonna do another one on March twelfth that went out. If you need another copy of that Google form, let me know, I'll send it out again. Um, and then there'll be one more in April. Uh, May gets a little tough with all the stuff going on, but if people can't get into March and April and really feel the need, we could try to squeeze one more in if we needed to in May. I would hate to do June, but maybe May.
Thank you, Jewel.
It's difficult for me to get away for the whole time, so I know that it would be possible to at least specify when I can attend?
Their times are in there, they're in the Google form.
Cause I don't see one for the March one, I see the one for January. It says it's closed.
Yeah, I close them out once they're done, but I thought in the last email I sent out, I have the March one right here. Um, but no one has signed up yet, which I did think was odd the other day, so I will resend it out. But in the March one that I have, it lists the four times, which I've rotated the times for each of them so that the, if people have a better opportunity in the morning, then if you've hit one or two of them, you might've been able to see one or two different schools. So I rotate the times each time, but this one, for example, coming up in March, has a Paul Smith from eight thirty to nine forty-five. Then we go to the high school for B block, which is the first time we'll be there for that block. Then we go to the middle school from eleven forty-five to one thirty and back to the high school for D block, so... They change every time, but they are in there, but I will resend that form because currently nobody has signed up, which is bizarre, so maybe something happened. And maybe I thought I put the link in the notes and I didn't, I'm not sure. It might've also not gone out to the board yet, to be honest, I might've only sent it out to staff. So I will send it to you guys tonight.
Great.
Just a reminder for those that weren't on the board, this is actually part of our board goals that each board member attends a focus walk. So there's only two opportunities left, so just please, if you haven't done one already, just, um, it's part of our goals to make sure that we try one, thank you.
Okay, next up is the school board survey, so the work we're doing with James McKim. Carissa, Liz and I and James, uh, put together the surveys for staff, community members and the school board. So if you haven't had a chance to go on and complete that survey yet, please do. We have our committee meeting this Wednesday at six o'clock. Uh, Liz will be representing the board in that as well, and we'll let you know how all that goes. Appreciate you taking some time to fill that out.
Oh, Dan, is there a date to complete that by?
Uh, I was hoping you'd have it finished before the Wednesday night, uh, meeting. Doesn't give you a lot of time.
Jack?
It did say February fourteenth on the form.
Yeah, 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 it was already a deadline, but if you haven't done it yet, you still have another day to hopefully fill it out for us. The next item is really a question for all the board members. We were having a conversation in one of our, uh, committee meetings about NHSBA, New Hampshire School Board Association emails. And we wanted to do a quick check with everyone to make sure you were receiving NHSBA emails. So if we could do a little head nod, is everybody receiving NHSBA emails? So I, I saw Jack, no, is any, Ruth, are you getting?
Ruth is not getting it.
Ruth, no. NHSBA.
Michael's not getting it. Leanne, you are?
I am.
Leanne, yes, Michael, no.
Jack, no.
And Ruth, no, and Jack's, no. So we have three noes clean, so...
And we, Marie gets, yes, Marie, you get the emails.
Marie, you get them, right?
Yes, I get the emails, I just can't log on to the webs, the, uh...
Policy website.
Right.
That's the question, that's the other question we're gonna ask. Okay, thank you, we'll look into all that tomorrow morning and see if we can get some answers on that. The next item is an update on the city school committee assignments. Liz, I'll let you handle this one, I have the list of, I don't know if you can read my writing, but...
Okay, oh, Hall, I have, Hall, I have it here.
You already have.
I do, I do. Of course, I did and then I clicked out of it, but I do. Um, yes, so, wanted to update everybody, so there are, um, three kind of joint, um, committees that, uh, we are involved with, with the city. Um, and one meets regularly and two don't, so I was contacted. And two of them, the board chair does need to be a part of, and one of them, they do not. So based on current appointments and requirements, um, we have, uh, we appointed people for these, so I'll just go through those now. Um, for the CIP committee, um, that is kind of tangentially related to finance. I, the board chair does need to be on that, so CIP representatives are me, uh, Michael Lombardo and Lori Cass. Um, joint finance is one that does meet often. Um, we currently have for, on our school board finance committee, we currently have four members for joint finance. Um, the city requires three. The school board chair does not need to be on that. And so for joint finance, we have Michael Lombardo, Lori Cass and Marie Danforth. And then finally, we have the city liaison, um, that does not currently meet often, but if it does, that is a three-person committee. The board chair does need to be on that. And so what we will do, four representatives for that, um, so it will be myself, it will be our lovely Ward one appointee for the future, I hope they know that, and Jane. Um, so we'll move forward with that. So I wanted to give everybody an update, two out of the three probably won't be super, like, active, um, at all, but, um, just for transparency and the, the kind of playing around that we had to do.
Will we be, like, actively notified of meeting times?
Yes, 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 yep, if, if a meeting is required. If a meeting is required, we will, yes.
I know they're posted, but...
The posting will happen after.
Yeah, they'll reach, they'll reach out to me if they're gonna schedule something and then I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, any other questions? No other committees, none of our other committees are affected, so we'll move forward on that. Thank you.
So as Lori was mentioning, we, in I two, we had a couple of discussions, um, and two of those discussions we wanted to bring to the full board. Uh, one we've, we've talked about quite a bit, uh, that's the class rank update discussion. Uh, so Dave is gonna talk to us a little bit about the class rank update and where we're at in this process. Uh, you may recall that this is a mathematical problem that we're facing here in terms of our grading system and moving towards, uh, the elimination of class rank and replacing it with something else. Um, the one, two, three, four system is compressing the GPAs of all of the students here at the high school. And we knew it was a problem that was gonna end up being a problem, which is why we're going down this path. Um, Dave did put out a survey, I'll let him speak to that survey, to students and parents, Dave?
Yes.
All right.
Go ahead. It's grades eight through eleven, we put a survey out to them to get their feedback. There was, um, about, I think, tw- ten, there was ten questions. And the gist of it is, what do they know, what, what do they wanna know about class rank? Do they know what it means, um, what do, what do they understand? The couple interesting things with the class rank as far as what we're seeing. Um, I think you have this in your folder, right? You see the, the graph, so I don't wanna like read, but the, if you go to the last page, um, page. So this is where, when Dan talks about the compression of grading, so if you look at Zoe's class right now, there's actually now, I just looked at class rate, there's actually eighteen students with above a three O. Between one and five is point one. So to the top student in the class and number five in the class is point one, because it's compressing based on the O GPA scale and based on like the, the ones from through. And Zoe's class is the last class that had, um, zero to one hundred scales. So they're the last class to come through, so everybody on, from, from juniors down will have had the, the competency-based instruction. So as you see, I looked ahead to the current grading. Obviously, the goal is to have sixty or seventy out of seventy students have a three O or better, because that means they're passing all of their classes. May not be realistic, but as you can see, we're jumping, it's a big jump from Zoe's class, class of twenty-four, twenty-five to the, to Kaylee's class. It nearly doubles, because again, they're all competency-based. Um, the other part that I thought was somewhat interesting was the question above that, would you be interested in attending a night? And they said, no, they don't wanna attend the nights, but what we're reading, if you looked at some of the comments, there's has to be a lot of, um, some instruction or some understanding of what class rank really is and what it's doing and wh- how it's, schools are getting away from them. Um, I did share with the group last year, the group last year, that I sent something out to all the principals in the state. Uh, I probably received thirty to forty responses. Um, I was actually surprised that more schools are moving away from class rank for the reasons that we've talked about, the compression, the competitiveness, the anxiety, the unhealthiness of it. So I think one of the things that we have talked about is how do we engage first the students in the building of understanding what class rank is and how we can help them understand what the numbers really mean. And then also, uh, having a, a parent information and on talking, having a, uh, honest discussion of what class rank is and what it is and what it could be. I think it, it's different than what it was when we were in high school. And, and more and more colleges are going away from class rank and GPA, they're looking at the more well-rounded student and taking other things into account.
So basically, based on our discussion, our next, our next steps over the next month or two is to try and get some education done with students and with families. Just about other schools that have taken this route, um, what the research is saying, and just what the, the mathematics is telling us. Uh, and the reality is to think that we can measure kids to a hundredth of a grade point to determine anything of value, that's, we're just not that good at measuring. And to think that we, we are, i- is a fool's errand. And that's the education piece we have to give to students and parents. If to think that someone with a three point eight six and someone with a three point eight five, I mean, I'm a, I'm a math guy, I'm an engineer. We're not that good at measuring. And, and, and that, that to, to, to have people's different things hinging on that does, doesn't make sense anymore, uh, in a one, two, three, four system. I mean, we have, we have kids thinking about not taking non-honors classes because they don't want their GPA to go down. Dave told the story at, at I two. Tell the story, Dave, it's important that people hear, I want Zoe to hear it and I want Kaylee to hear it.
Yeah, so the former school counselor, there were two students who were, um, the two brightest clearly in, in the, in the school. One's brother, or his brother and his father both went to Harvard. The recommendation as a freshman is don't take a phys ed class your freshman year. So he didn't. So when it came to his senior year, second semester, when GPA and class rank is already determined and valedictorian is determined, they looked, they, they compared transcripts, every grade was identical. Both had As, no A minuses, no A pluses, just straight As in every course, honors, AP, everything. And the one student was valedictorian or was, because he did not take a phys ed his freshman year. He had manipulated the system to support his being number one in the class. That being said, when it was brought out and we figured out what he had done, we had a conversation and clearly they, they became co-vows, but the point of the whole thing was he had learned how, he had figured out how to manipulate the system. And right now, eh, at Franklin, we have very few honors level courses or A P, everything.
And right now, at Franklin, we have very few honors level courses or AP courses. Um, we also have students who are saying, I don't wanna take this class because it could lower my, my class rank or my GPA. On the flip side, we also have students who wanna take an excessive number of uh LRCC courses because they get, it's a weighted course over there, it's worth a five because it's a college-level course. It's at the college level. So again, it's sort of, it's manipulating the system. In a fourth-point system, it's, it doesn't weigh as, as much. But I, again, I just happened to look at it tonight, and between one and five is point one. So like Dan said, we're trying to go, is a one point one-six better than a one point one seven, or worse than a one point one-seven? Uh, I think last year, they were off by one one-hundredth of a point between number one and number two.
So that's our update on class rank. This is a decision that the board will be making, uh, we hope in May or June at the latest. Um, so, you know, questions, comments, discussion? Um, we'll keep bringing it to you every month about where we're at and what we're doing to try to move this along. But ultimately, this is the board that has to make a decision about how, what direction we're gonna go in here. So we wanna keep you up to date and involved in the steps we're taking to try to educate people.
Yeah.
Um, with this warrant, um, a, an ad hoc committee, um, of, of some board members to be able to be in on this conversation since it's gonna come to this level? So it may be important for board members to hear some of these conversations that are happening at the local level or at the school level?
We're currently currently in I two.
So it's gonna be part of the, or it's currently in the I two committee?
In task, yeah.
Yes, yes. That is where it originated there, and that's where we get updates and all the process and have received the data and anecdotal data as well, so that it's going, it's part of I two.
Okay.
They also help formulate the plan over the last whatever six months or nine months of what we've been doing, so.
So in, in the committee reports for I two, I would just ask that, um, the, the board members that are on that or the chair just touch upon those conversations that are happening to help us make a more informed decision in May when we have to do this. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, the other item we wanted to talk about that has generated through I two is the high school summer school program. Um, so for the past few years, we have had a remedial summer school at Franklin High School. We've had funding for it. And we've had kids who would come in and for a week or two, come in and take course, a course in like a week or two weeks of work. We, we have sensed that there are some students who are saying, oh, I'll just do this at summer school. And, and not giving their best effort during the school year at nine-week courses or two, or eighteen-week courses or year-long courses. Because they think that it's an easier credit to do it over the summer. Dave and I have done some conversation around the fact that we have built in some time in the high school schedule for kids to make up competencies um, throughout the school year. So what we're considering and wanted to talk about the, to the board about tonight was uh, eliminating the summer school remedial program and using those built-in times during the school year that would push kids to have to make up their competencies during these built-in times that we have in our schedule. So for instance, if a kid takes a nine-week course the first quarter of the year, and they have a competency they haven't completed yet, it doesn't make sense to me that they would go to summer school uh, twenty-seven weeks later to do that work. When they could, during the second quarter, go to these remedial times throughout the school day in the next nine weeks to finish this work and get the credit all taken care of. Uh, Dave, you can speak more eloquently probably to the different scenarios, but.
So, um, this was for brought, first brought up with to the instructional leadership team about that same concept. I don't take a class, or I refuse to participate, and then I fail and I can go and take a class. And again, the gap between the nine-week course and we've gone to a lot of micro crediting or quarter-long credits. So if I'm taking US history, it's broken up into four quarters so that I can pass a quarter, pass a quarter, pass a quarter, pass a quarter without failing and then, you know, having to take the whole course over. Letters, failure letters are sent by board policy two weeks prior to the end of the quarter. So what the leadership team suggested is the last two weeks, which gives the students a minimum of four hours um, to set up time with their classroom teachers, um, to go and work on the competencies that they are not taking, that they have not passed. Um, an example being, we have, we have a student who um, failed phys ed. They had a three in the class but did not pass certain competencies, so they did not earn the credit. You have to pass all the competencies. When you look at the data, the student skipped the class eight times and was absent another four times, so, and now they're saying, I deserve credit. If we were to go back to that same policy, we'd say, no, you gotta, you're a senior, you're gonna have to wait six weeks, whatever, to make up that time. What we're saying now is, no, you have the two weeks at the end of the quarter to make that time up, make up the competency, make up the hours, make up whatever it is the teacher says that you are missing. And um, so that they can earn the credit during that time with the teacher, with the actual classroom teachers. Realize that if I'm, if I'm an English teacher, the class I may have not passed may not be with the same English teacher that I took it, took it with. So the idea was during our tornado time, the last two weeks would be for competency recovery. When a letter goes home with, letter goes home to a, a parent that their child is, is fail, is currently failing a class, they have the four, they have the two weeks to make up that time, to make up those hours that they need to do with that particular teacher. It could be some little assignment that they missed, it could be something big that they've missed, but allows them to make up that competency during that time. The summer school, we, we had s- forty-seven students enrolled last summer. Um, but there were probably more that needed it, but by pushing them out to, challenging the students to do it in real time, it's probably more effective of them earning the credits as opposed to waiting a longer time. Questions?
Um, so would this be a recovery like lab? So like there'll be some open times where the students would drop in that need that recovery?
So I've created, uh, we already have a form of, of updated the form that a student would take to a teacher and say, tell me what competency has, very specific what competency I need to make up, the dates that the teacher's available, the student go to that class, and then once it's signed off and approved, it comes to the administrative sign off on it, gets the guidance, and then they get their credit in the course. So they, it's, it pushes a little more effort on the student's part, but it allows them to get, earn credit right away as opposed to waiting for a long time. And we have had students that have failed a year-long course, go to summer school for a couple days, and they think that's enough, and they get the credit. And we're looking at summer as more of an enrichment opportunity. So if I wanna take a class, like to music or art or something like that, I can do that as opposed to recovering credit.
Yeah, we used to have uh, recovery time at the end of, when we had finals, mid-terms, things like that, and that's when it was time to take place and all things are shifted.
Yeah.
Um, but that was, it provided time for staff to be able to have time for students that need recovery.
Yep.
Um, and it, for them to be able to engage. So if, if they, if students know what they're missing.
Would they, you're saying that they would go, reach out to the teacher, and then they would set up a time? Would be after school? Would it be during?
No, it stays during the school day.
From two fifteen to three fifteen is tornado time. Um, the first six weeks are activities. There's also time for study halls. They don't even know this is changing, but it's changing in, in, after vacation, as far as activities, going back to an activities model. Um, but the last two weeks would be recovery opportunities. We did have the re- competency recovery weeks, but what, what the challenge with that is, we had students who had to come to school with no competencies to recover. They were passing everything, and the building was chaotic. And/or we had students that just were here and just running a, you know, running amok. And I'm trying to do recovery with one student, and this student is in my class and doesn't need to do anything. So it just ended up being this really wasted time. With this, we're looking at, uh, I'm a math person, I see Mr. Bedard. I know that on Tu- both Tuesdays, he has his, his tornado time for math recovery. I go see him, I do work on my competencies at that time with my teacher. That's very specific, or any teacher that needs that.
So that's, um, when we were doing summer school prior to this, there was a, a minimum threshold that you had to achieve in order to make you eligible to be able to do it. A tube. Okay, so I wouldn't, I didn't know if that was still in place or not, because I mean, if they were taking the, if they were taking the whole course, then they wouldn't be eligible to take it because they have to be taking a whole.
Yes, so it was a tube. The other thing is by having them work on the competencies immediately, we're not overloading, we're not having juniors in freshman classes, we're not having, you know, seniors in, in sophomore classes. We're not overloading a particular subject area because someone or a group of students did not participate correctly or effectively. So this is, this is trying us to be more proactive in the moment as opposed to being react, you know, waiting for the rest of the year.
So what we are hoping for is, we're hoping for the board to support this so that we can go to the student body and, and tell them we're eliminating the summers, uh, I guess remedial summer school. It's only gonna be enrichment summer school, you know, where kids can take enrichment classes. So that we can then embed and, and have students start doing this right away for the next two quarters and make this happen. So that's what we're looking for you to, 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 uh, to help us with tonight.
The, the other just side note is, two years ago, summer school was nineteen thousand dollars to pay the teachers to do summer school. Last year was eleven thousand dollars for teachers to do summer school. That's just the recovery portion of the enrichment stuff. So it becomes a, a, it's a financial issue, it's a financial concern too, as far as we have teachers who are available during the school day. We should, let's utilize their skill set during the school day.
Can I ask a question? What's the difference between the remedial and enrichment summer school?
So enrichment is, if I am looking to do, let's use, I'll use Mrs. Kraft's class as an example, a recovery, so someone fails a basic art course. So they would go and make up the competencies during her basic art course, right away. Mrs. Kraft teaches this class called um, puppetry, advanced puppetry. So it's just for students who act, who really wanna be focusing on art or something creative. Ms. Finley could do a theater class, something, a drama course, that's that we normally do not offer during the school year. It's like a week-long, two-week intensive course that kids can earn an additional credit towards graduation, being elective credit. So an example, we had a class, uh, my first year here, I walked in in the summertime, and it was um, Bigfoot. It's all about Bigfoot and the research of Bigfoot, and the kids were able to do different things with that, so um, that's the difference.
Here's one message. There's um, I know like special needs children, they need that stable going to school even in the summertime. So I'm sure that there must be special needs in the high school, so that's long time, you can.
Yeah, that, that was the goal, wasn't it?
That's a, that's a, that's a difference, ES.
That continues.
Yeah, that's our E S Y. Yeah.
That's a different program, yeah.
All right. Oh, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's extended year program which we have, but.
Yeah, that's a really good question, but that's, that continues.
And just to add, so we, we did a special segment too, and so just for the uh, to summarize what the members of I two, what we liked about this, we liked the, um, accountability piece for students where they don't, you know, they're, they don't get to deliberately put things off and kinda make it like, they are being forced to more effectively use the, the school day. Um, and we like the idea of it helping to combat learning loss. Like, like Dave said, if you, you know, take a course and you don't pass it in the first nine weeks, by the time you go to make up those credits in the summer, you're essentially having to relearn things and you're, so you're not actually probably ultimately getting the same, what, to the same level that you would if you were to be completing that content um, at the same time. So those are some things that we, we thought were, um, we liked about that, so, just to move on. I see pensive looks. Are there any other questions or discussions?
Were you looking for a motion there? So, I'll save that for a second.
Okay, all right, so. We need a motion to amend summer school.
Eliminate remedial summer school, is what I would say.
To eliminate remedial summer school. All right, motion made by Lori, you have a second? Second by Ruth, discussion. Yes, Jack?
Um, I like the idea where we're going. The only thing I don't like is the timing of this, because I feel that we're five months into the school year at this point. Um, and whether or not students were planning on uh, receiving credits during the summer school time or not. And I know it's a, a financial strain as well, it's just that it seems that this would be something that we could plan for summer of twenty-six.
All right, we asked that a little bit, and Dave's response was.
They, they always can, there's always time from now until to make up courses from the beginning of the school year to, to now. I mean, our, our goal is, our goal would be to communicate this out as soon as possible, like here's what are the options. Uh, our teachers aren't aware of this yet as well, because I need the board to, but our, our leadership team thought that was, it was the best use of our time for teachers in the building during tornado time. Um, I, I mean, I'm not sure how many students did not pass courses, they just, grades just came out. I know that we sent out a hundred and sixty-eight failure letters, but that's, that's, but that's because of the competency failures, not the course failures, if that makes sense. So a lot of students were passing the class but not passing a competency, so we make sure that they understand it's a competency that they have to make up.
Oh, so. If they're missing competencies in the course, they don't pass the course?
Correct.
Okay. If you had to throw out a number of, how many of those hundred and sixty-eight failures are attendance-related?
Not many.
Not many.
I mean, our attendance rate is ninety percent. I just looked today, I mean, today was a bad day for us. We had eighty-eight percent attendance after our delayed opening. So last week, we're at ninety-three percent, ninety-five percent, so it's not an attendance thing, it's the, the other aspect.
I guess my only question would be, in your professional opinion, do you feel that from now till the end of school is enough time for the kids that got the letters to make up what they need?
I think so. I think it is, that's the urgency of the conversation is, is to get this out to families, to say, here's what you can do. Um, we still have time for students, and I, I, I can't tell you the data as far as failures. Um, I, I can tell you students are, we're seeing more students challenge themselves academically than we have in the past. I think we have thirty-plus students taking courses at LRCC right now that are not, that doesn't include the bakery classes. We have twenty going to chemistry tomorrow, and then we have another ten or so sign up on their own and driving themselves there. So we're seeing the challenge. We wanna bring everybody up to that standard as well. I think this is another way, another layer of raising the bar for our students. Um, and I, 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 I believe our teachers are the best ones to give them the instruction. If I'm not passing Mrs. Noe's class, it makes much more sense to have Mrs. Noe's do my instruction and show me what I need than having a Miss, uh, Mr. Blue and do it in the summertime.
Any additional special questions? Jack?
The summer course work that we were doing, there were, there were all intensive courses and essentially covered all the competencies uh, in a smaller amount of time.
So what the student would fill out or the teacher for summer school, when they sign up, they'd have to get what competency they were not passing. So it is a form that we have, and I'm, I've updated it to be more specific and have a parent signature on it and some of those things, so it's very specific. It could just be one thing that they need to, needs, you know, the student that missed eleven days, it was because he, he didn't participate. Okay, so what do we have to do to have him participate? What does that look like? Well, the teacher can say, here's what you need to do. Track your walk, track your steps, do this, do that, whatever that may be. Participate in, in these activities over the next two weeks, and that's the competency recovery.
So that, so during the summertime, it's kind of the same model that you're trying to move to?
Yes.
Within the, the.
Yes. It's this ex- exact same model, it's, it's just we're, we're moving it quicker than waiting for the summer. And because of the micro crediting, the way that we've done courses in the nine weeks, US history used to be a year-long course, but now we've divided it up into, into different, different sections, right? So if I fail quarter one, I can still pass quarter two. I can fail quarter three and pass quarter four, but I still have to make quarter one up to get my high school history course. So why would I wait twenty-seven weeks to do that if I can do that the last two weeks?
One last thing. So I, I would be in favor of, of doing uh, sort of simultaneous one where we do it during the day as well but not end it uh, for the summer. Uh, that would be something that I would, that I'd be in favor of. Um, I just don't feel that it, I don't like changing it up this lead in the year, saying that we're not gonna be doing something, so.
I have to agree. I, I got some feedback that um, not all of the makeup time last year at the end of twenty twenty-four was able to happen. I think emergencies happen, teachers are sick, life. I think emergencies happen, teachers are sick, life emergencies, so I feel like it gets really precarious when the kid has scheduled that time with that teacher for that makeup time. Towards, you know, um, and then to not have summer, so, okay, something happens. My grandfather died, we gotta travel to Pennsylvania, oh, now I can't go to summer makeup time either. So feels with all of the schedule changes the high school has gone through the past few years, it feels a little precarious for me to not have that for our students.
So can we, we have a provision in there to say if, if kids aren't able to go with the plan and say, this is how we want to do it going forward? And have a, have that as a backup, is that what you're saying?
I want the opportunity, I want them to have that opportunity, that they went into the school year thinking.
For just this year, so like.
For just this year.
Yeah, that's kinda worrying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What if, uh, could we do a compromise where we allow them the rest of the year to make up competencies for up till this point? But going into the next half of the year, they would not be able to do that in the summer? Does that make sense? Or they would have to do it during tornado time?
They, they have the ability to do makeup competencies at any time, the challenge is because we don't mandate that they do that until summer. They, they don't do it. Giving them the other opportunities with saying, here is your opportunity to make this, these competencies up. Here is what you have to do to get there. The opportunities are not there right now, I don't know if it will change the number of students, maybe it'll, maybe it'll be great, maybe it'll be terrible, I don't. The, the challenge is, summer school is not designed in a way that is, improves or supports the learning in the moment.
What happens if they fail in the last quarter of US history?
So that's what I'm saying, the last two weeks, we know the failure letters go out the last two weeks per board policy. So that last two weeks, we know that there's, we have two weeks left to get this. What we're seeing right now is students do not do a lot of work, some students do not do much work, and then the last week they are scrambling like mad to make up, make up, make up. And it puts a burden on our teachers to say, oh, I gotta wait and do all these extra grading, because you didn't do something that was due September ninth, or whatever date it was. Now we're saying, oh no, if you didn't do it, you have these opportunities to do that, to take some of the burden off, but.
Those twelve, that's a good point, these students, if they end of the year.
In, in that, whether or not they're getting a micro credit or whatever, um, there is no additional time, cause the school year ends. So like, do they, would they try to get their, make up their competencies at the beginning of the next year? Well, I'm saying they have the two weeks prior to the end of the school year to get a, get, make up that work. They have that two-week window that we have, and, you know, the two weeks is a number, we can say three weeks. We can do four weeks, it, it, it's irrelevant in our mind as far as the timeframe, the idea is to, to put it at, at that time. Regardless of what is in the grading system or Alma, if it's red, they're not doing it, or it's an E, but. We're trying to say, here's another opportunity, so the part of it is the communication with the parents and putting a little bit more pressure on the student to, you have time to get this done.
So, alright, so for the plan, we've moved forward and implementing it, whether it be tomorrow or whatever. Um, and if, if, as a result of that, you may get students that are going to be recovering.
Their credits during this last half of the year, so if your summer is two weeks only, is it multiple staff, is it?
It's been four weeks.
Okay. And it's been, um, we, we stack, well, we do the same timeframe as the elementary, middle school for their summer school, so it's like eight to twelve-ish around there. Um, and students will come as long as they have competencies to make up.
So, that being said, then I'm in favor.
Not eliminating the summer for this summer, uh, twenty twenty-five, but reducing it to maybe two weeks, cause you may have less of a population of your kids. Because they may be able to, now since you're going to be implementing it during the latter half of the school year. To be able to reduce it, I mean, there would be some additional cost savings that way. But I wouldn't be in favor of this particular motion, because it eliminates it completely in the summer.
What if, like, I was thinking, so like, currently there's, and normally there's the last two weeks for current recovery during the school year. What if that for this year was deliberately and clearly extended to like four weeks? So that instead of having like the two weeks of summertime, that just, there's more of a recognition that like, as we ease into transition, there. Students may need more time to accomplish this, but instead of trying to scramble and get a, some sort of summer school going. Um, we, there's that deliberate charge still during the year, would that maybe be sufficient?
Well, knowing students.
If they haven't got their stuff in gear the rest of the year, it's not gonna matter whether we push it back an additional two weeks. There's still, majority of them are only gonna wait until those two weeks or after. So, um, like I said, I mean, I, I, I would be in favor of reducing the amount of summer, um, uh, and not having the full four weeks.
What was the difference between giving them two weeks during the summer, giving them two weeks during the school year?
Because they may not, they may not be able to recover everything, and, um, the amount of pressure this may put on staff to try to. Catch up the first five months of the school year of recoveries that, that are already in need.
I also feel like the teachers could have dedicated focus during that summer, instead of like, school year's still happening, it's still open school. This one's covering this classroom, this faculty's sick, this, I mean, we're like chess pieces.
What are you doing in the summer, you, you telling me you fully staff summer school? So you don't have experts, subject matter experts, teaching these classes. They have more opportunity during the school year to make up this time to work with the teachers that are teaching that subject. So if you have the summertime, I don't know, when Mason was in summer school, he was the ELA teacher teaching math. I would rather he stayed extra at school and, and learned from the math teacher.
How, how many staff, um, are hired for the summer program?
It varies, it, it really, it sometime, it's.
Like last summer?
We try to get every, uh, some, someone from every subject matter, but let's, let's just use Dave Bedard as an example. If Dave Bedard says, you know what, I'm going away to Arizona for the summer, I'm unavailable, we have no one to teach math for the summertime.
No, I, I hear you, but on the focus walk, I saw a science teacher doing a great job teaching ELA class, and I'm thinking about numbers, teacher ratios. So is it like five teachers, forty-seven kids, four teachers, forty-seven kids?
Um, it varies, so like, Mr. Bedard would probably have forty-seven of the forty-seven for math.
It's a hundred percent math competency makeup.
No, no, I'm, no, but I'm saying, he might have, he might have the most English, because his, we people have, I don't think who taught English last year, I don't think we had anybody. I know Delaney taught, um, social studies, Mrs. Kraft was here for the, uh, for that, but it's usually four teachers, four or five teachers at best.
Okay, for, and last, the enrollment was around forty-seven last summer.
Yeah, 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 enrollment last summer, we had sixty-seven, uh, sixty-three students, only forty-seven earned credit. Again, it's the same thing, it's summertime, it's a beautiful day, I'm not going to school for the summer, and that's the other battle, if I'm a high school student, I need to work. And it's during the summertime where jobs are very.
Well, that was a choice, maybe, right, we don't know, but.
I don't, yeah.
I mean, if, if you do extend it to the four weeks, you're still giving them that two-week extra time, it's just a different time of the year to give it to them. What does that look like for the students, like? Do they get that like four hours that they would get in the summer, and is it, does it equate?
I, I don't know what, I don't know, it's our, gonna be our first, what do you call it, iteration, iteration?
It'll be our next iteration.
Next iteration of it, so the hope is that if I go and spend time with whatever teacher, that I can get a lot done in that hour.
Dave, let me ask you this question, is it, is it safe to say that some kids are getting dismissed early on Tuesdays and Thursdays? Instead of going to a tornado time, getting the help, getting the recovery that they need?
Yes.
So, is that, one of the issues we're trying to put back here is to say, look, you guys are leaving school early and not taking advantage of recovery time that we have put in place here. So we're trying to get some teeth into the recovery time, because kids are leaving school and not taking advantage of it. So let's, let's put that out there and say that's what's happened. So, you know, if I'm Johnny, and Johnny's not passing his English class, Johnny's decided to go home in two forty-five, two fifteen.
Two fifteen, yeah.
Instead of going to his remedial time, so, cause he knows he can go to summer school for two weeks. And get the credit, and he doesn't wanna go all year long to tornado time. That's, that's what we're trying to put up, we're trying to have, the kids have more skin in the game, so they can take advantage of the time that we put together for them. And we might be able to do both, we, we probably could do both, I think that's what Jack is suggesting, is to do both. You know, cause I think, I think what we're trying to accomplish is that the kids need more skin in the game. And parents need to know that this is how kids get their remedial credits, not by going home earlier, Tuesday and Thursday, so on summer school for a week or two. And we call it a credit, with somebody that perhaps isn't even such a matter expert, that perhaps like Lori is suggesting.
Okay, Lori?
Um, he just went, um, I did have a question on that. Sorry, go ahead, Jack, I can't remember.
I'm, I'm gonna, uh, make an amendment, um, and see what happens. Uh, instead of eliminating it completely, eliminate two weeks, uh, off of the summer school, um, recovery time?
Just for this year, or?
Just for this year.
And then go full next year?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, is there, do you need a second?
Can I ask a question before? So, um, along with this plan, is part of that to say, if you're failing a competency, you're not going to be. Going out and skipping your eternity of time?
If a parent dismisses a child, they can't not dismiss it.
But it's during the regular school day, right?
So the way it's designed right now, tornado time, it's, it's senior and junior privileges, it's the way it's designed. So they have to have, earn X number of credits, they have to have X number of community service hours, and they have to have X number of, of, um. We connect credits as well, so I can, and right, if I'm, I can earn, I have, I have enough credits to graduate. I'm, I'm on track, but I've chosen not to do certain things along the way. So they, so they can, they can, they can leave, we've flipped the script on it, now we're looking at kids who are passing every class. Who are, have zero discipline referrals, have ninety-plus percent attendance, have zero to one discipline, have zero, less than five tardies, and they're getting the permissions to go. That being said, though, there, if a parent calls and says, we have a lot of students that are dismissed. That call home and say, I'm not feeling it today, I don't wanna be in gym class, I don't wanna be in math class, and a parent dismisses them. And we're stuck, saying, okay.
Hi, Lori, real quick, I just wanna make sure if there's no second to my amendment, that it's dead? Cause we shouldn't have conversations.
So I would like to second his amendment. But I might also want to, but I might also want to amend the amendment. So, um, I agree, uh, eliminating summer school for this year, it's a little bit late, but. I also liked with the suggestion about giving a longer lead time at the end of the year to allow them to. I wonder if it might make sense to put the onus back on to the student and say. This remedial summer school will be available to you if you haven't met the competencies after taking advantage of the time offered during the school year. Right, so we are giving you this time, we are giving you this opportunity during the school day, during the school year, to make up these competencies. Right, if you attempt to use that time to do so and are unable to, this year, there's gonna be an opportunity during the summer to, to continue to make that up?
Condition.
A condition, right, if they decide to not try during the school year. Then we don't invite them to try to do it during the summer. It's on them.
Accountability.
It's a accountability.
Do you feel like, uh, amending your amendment?
Yeah, I don't think we have to amend it, that's on administrative right, they can set, sort of establish the criteria for that summer school piece, so.
So, I mean, should, I mean, do you want the amendment to say, amended to be two weeks of conditional summer school, or just two weeks of summer?
Two weeks of summer school, it, the, the administration can set the parameters.
Yeah, I trust the administration. I, uh, my, uh, yes, my second stance.
Okay, so, amendment made by Jack to amend the original motion to eliminate remedial summer school. Give you a motion to eliminate two weeks of summer school, seconded by Michael. Any questions or discussion on the amendment? Okay, it's a roll call vote, amend it, please.
Lori Cass.
Yes.
Jane Cody.
Yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feifield.
Yes.
Jack Finley.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
So that adds the amendment to.
So now.
Original motion.
So now we're voting on the motion to have two weeks of summer school instead of four. And that motion was made by Lori and seconded by Ruth. Any last questions or discussion before we vote on that? Alright, roll call vote, please. Lori Cass, yes. Jane Cody, yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes. Lori Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feifield.
Yes.
Jack Finley.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina, yes.
Alright, motion passes. Thank you. Okay. That finishes our new business, so we will move on to item nine now, school board goals update, which the update is, we need a new meeting time. For the school board goals committee. Um, school board goals committee, Marie, you're the chair of that?
Uh, yeah, unfortunately, we had bad weather, the day that we had scheduled for our meeting, we need to schedule another meeting.
Okay.
Um, so we don't have anything really to report, um, as far as the volunteer practice goes.
Do we wanna pick a date right now, Marie, while we're all here?
I would love, I would love to, yeah.
Let's do it, yeah.
Uh, I'm available, what is it, this week, this week is pretty heavy with meetings already, I see. Obviously, the sooner the better, because we only have two months before our, our date, um.
About March sixth. That's a Thursday.
Yeah, um, we could, that would be fine with me, I'm just thinking, if we could do it sooner, that would be great.
The issue is that we need a little bit of time, and then next week is vacation.
Next week's vacation.
So we can't hold any.
Next week is vacation, okay.
So the week after, that would probably be the first viable one.
Alright, so March sixth would work, yeah.
Who else is, so Ruth's on that, and then Lori, you're, is he on that?
Wanna do five thirty, Lori, is that, five thirty on the sixth, Marie, does that work?
Uh, that works for me, yes.
I'm sure it'll snow again, but.
Okay.
That seems to be working.
Hopefully by then, I'll be in walking mood, and I'll be over my cold, and I'll be over.
We will hope for all of that. Thank you for that, yes, thank you, Marie, for that update and for setting that, alright, school board goals, so we will get an update on, uh, next month, that'll be perfect.
So I just, it just, just real quick, I didn't know, um, because there was conversation before we actually, uh, developed this committee. About having the makers space, uh, develop, uh. Uh, uh, buttons for the, for the volunteers, and I didn't know where, where we had the, the, um. Student, uh, committee members there, if this would be an appropriate time for them to have their input on being able to do that or not. Or whether that's in the right direction to go in.
So we could definitely make buttons, we have the ability to make some buttons, and so you would wanna make a button for the volunteers to come to the breakfast?
That's what the discussion was, and I know there, there's not been an official vote on that, but I just didn't know what was in, entailed in getting that going.
I think that if, if, if you, on March sixth, when we meet as a committee, we just need to know what we want the button to say. As a committee, you can make that decision, and we'll get buttons made, we have plenty of people that can make buttons for us.
Okay.
Okay?
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Great agenda item, okay, um, excellent, so moving on to item ten, policy, we just have one little baby policy going for first read, um, and so we'll need a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Alright, motion made by Leanne. Seconded by Jane, any discussion, questions? Alright, roll, roll call vote, please.
I need to make a new thing.
Yeah, to, this is to approve it for first read.
This is first read. Lori Cass, Jane Cody, yes.
Liz Cody?
Yes.
Marie Danforth?
Yes.
Leanne Feifield.
Yeah.
Jack.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
And Ruth Magina.
All right, excellent. So, BDE has been approved for first read. Take a peek, it's short, great reading. Uh, and that finishes policy for today. Um, item eleven, late items. Dan, we have late items.
Yes, we have one late item. We have reached an agreement, the negotiating team with the Franklin Education Association on a technology memorandum of agreement. I know that they are going to work with their members for approval, and we are seeking, Jane was the chair of that, and we're seeking approval of that from the board tonight.
I would like to make a motion to accept the MOA, the memorandum of agreement, um, for, uh, technology use.
Okay, motion, yeah, motion made by Michael.
Second.
Jack will second. We, we know, we know it is. Okay, um, all right, motions up for, uh, roll call vote, please.
Lori Cass. Jane Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.
Yes.
Leanne Feifield.
Yes.
Jack Finley.
Yes.
Michael Lombardo.
Yes.
Ruth Magina.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. We have our MOA, and we'll slide on down to item number twelve, second public participation. Anybody else in the public wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we will close that item, and we do have a need for a second non-public session, so I need a motion for that fee. So, move, by Jane.
Second.
I think Leanne got there first. Seconded by Leanne. Uh, roll call vote, please. We're at thirteen.
Oh, yeah, are we going under B?
Oh. Um, la di ba da ba da, ba da ba da.
First, personnel and negotiations.
Uh, negotiation?
Yeah.
Which one is, where is that one? That's not there anymore.
So, A, B, C, and J?
Yeah.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow. Thank you, Barb.
The motion has no other reason.
Oh, it is. I don't know if it's on there, but it's definitely a reason.
See? Okay.
Uh, Lori Cass. Jane Cody.
Yes.
Liz Cody.
Yes.
Marie Danforth.